I want to say something about students being hyper-aware of their scores and how demoralizing it is for the students. And we have to find ways of not sharing, especially for early elementary, and be very cognizant about sharing those scores with the students and how it makes them feel. The other thing that I want to ask you about ELL students, obviously, if they've been here in the country for two or three years, I still think that usually in research has shown that it takes six, seven years for somebody to be fluent in English, and even still, they still struggle. But beyond that, do you think they're at a disadvantage when they take these tests with taking a long time to read, obviously more than regular students?
Yes, definitely. And first, I would like to just acknowledge your first remark about our early elementary students not being so aware of their test scores that it demoralizes.
I can tell you my son is very aware.
Yeah, so I wholeheartedly agree with that, and that's something I definitely want to make sure we continue to address moving forward. And then in terms of English learners, you're correct. Six to seven years to become proficient. And yes, they're definitely at a disadvantage taking those assessments, especially the SAT and college readiness assessments. They're very heavy on grade-level texts, and they are very high on academic decontextualized vocabulary, which is something ELS often struggle with. Actually, the Smarter Balanced Assessments were written to try to minimize that to some degree. But the College Board assessments definitely are written to be at that higher level. The state actually did try to write into our accountability plan some accommodations for our English learners. Right now, English learners are exempt just their first year in language arts, but they do have to take math and the required after that to continue taking it. I think the state proposed that they don't take any assessments the first year. The second year, they take them, but it's not for any type of accountability. The second year, they take them as their baseline data. It's not until like the fourth year that they start to measure growth on those assessments, which would be a little more in line with what the research says. But there definitely are challenges to those assessments, and they're written to be at very high lexile levels, even above the 11th grade level when you get up to the SAT.
Couple of items before we keep going around. One thing, and I think it goes back to what Trusty Moser was just saying with English learners, but for any of the students in special populations, they can get extra accommodations of time. So we need to make sure people know that they... Do they need to ask for it to make sure that they're getting it?
Yes, and I would say that our support staff tries to be very well-aware of that and tries to offer it to the fullest that we... But yeah, but definitely the students, if they feel like they're not, should advocate for themselves as well. But we do make sure that prior to testing, we ask everyone to take a look at their students to make sure that they're getting this correct accommodation, and we try to have those lists verified several times.
Okay. Going back to the assessments, my interpretation, what you're saying, is that there's a bunch of tests that we have to give. We don't really have any choice. Now, as citizens, we could be reaching out to legislators. I don't know if the State Board of Education has much to say. I think it's more the legislators itself and share our thoughts on that one. But now, when it gets down to the district level, and I'll focus in on NWEA, which is the one that we choose to use, we do do it for several different items that you mentioned. How have we felt that that works? Does it make any sense for us to look at a different assessment to replace it? Do we have the ability that we can adjust the amount of time that we spend using it? Can we shorten some of those areas and still get a good result out of it?
I do think that we can minimize the time with a few more consistent protocols throughout the year. We have talked about not offering it at some points in the past. And honestly, some of those conversations are not made in isolation. We get feedback from a lot of our different stakeholder groups, and we've gotten several different pieces of information. A lot of people like the mid-year results. Some people would like to see the time reduced. And there are several other alternatives to NWEA. I know some different districts, iReady, there's a few other vendors. Most of them are fairly similar in the time that it takes. iReady is another one I'm familiar with. They're all about 50 questions, and they're meant to take roughly about an hour per administration. When I look at the time that we take within our district, it seems to be higher than that. And that's where I feel like with some tighter protocols, we might be able to pull that in a little bit. But we are actually going to look at our current assessments and look at alternatives and see, you know, if there might be anything that might better serve us. I mean, NWEA is something that we've given for quite a few years, but with all of our programs, it's definitely something that we should review.
The other thing I'd bring up is that while we're talking about district assessments, then there's the individual class tests and things like that. If you were to guess, you added all that time with what we have to do in assessment here, how much more assessment time or how much more total test time are these students having, you think?
And that part is, I think, a little harder to estimate. And what makes that a little challenging is because there's a lot... There's two kind of rough groups of assessments. There's formative assessment and summative assessments. The formative assessments are the things that take place moment-to-moment, feedback that teachers give to students. It's, you know, questions that they ask in class, and that's kind of intimately tied to the instructional cycle. And then we also have our unit quizzes, weekly tests, those types of things. And off the top of my head, I'm not sure if I could give you a good estimation because it varies quite a bit from the subject. I do know that, for example, the League of Great City Schools did some research. There's been a few other ones that have kind of tried to assess that across the nation. I could take a look at what they did. Other than that, we would probably have to ask some of our teachers to provide a better information about that.
Trusty Barry.
You asked my question regarding NWEA. Thank you.
Trusty Watts.
So I know I asked this at the last meeting, and so, I mean, obviously you've got enough similar information now. I guess I'm not hearing the benefits for the student for all of this testing. I'm hearing testing, and I'm getting overwhelmed. And I know that my children, they remember, he's in seventh grade, he remembers what his DRA score was from second grade kindergarten. He knows exactly what his scores were on the NWEA in the winter time and compares it to his sister right now. And I know that the schools would post the percentage of their DRA scores and their NWEA. And I hear the anxiety when she comes home and says, "We have to do M-step. We have to do M-step." And she's, you know, she's obviously nervous about it. So on one hand, I'm hearing it's not a big deal, and I'm telling her it's not a big deal, but she's not feeling that, and she's not seeing that. So it's great that we're thinking it's not a big deal, but that's not what the students are hearing, and that's not what they're feeling. And I know May is Mental Health Month, and I'm thinking, I'm hearing a lot of the downfalls of testing, and I'm not hearing any of the benefits, other than saying, "I remember what my NWEA score is." That's not going to get them into college, and that's not going to give them their first job. So what is, I guess, in your mind, what is the benefit for the student?
But when it comes to state accountability tests, I would say there's minimal benefit to the individual's. There is some information about, I mean, how well they are prepared for college and career reading. And the idea behind that is, there is a lot of research that shows that when students get to college, many of them end up having to take remedial courses because they're not prepared for college-level math and language art. So there is some benefit to seeing, are we kind of on track? But again, there is measurement error along with these assessments, and one single test score can't necessarily tell us that. So the state accountability tests are really more for school accountability, district accountability. The other assessments that we choose to give, and again, we don't want to make the students hypersensitive of those results, but with our early literacy assessments, it's really meant to be information that the teachers know so that they can help the students, and by having that information, give the students the support they need. So that information is important to how well we structure our classroom assessments. And then in terms of our benchmark assessments, again, it's to help us identify which students are, you know, kind of on track for where we think they should be, again, just one piece of measurement. And then also knowing which students we can help support further just by corroborating it with other classroom benefits as well. But summative assessment is really meant to happen at the end of a learning cycle, and it's really meant to just see how that learning cycle went. Formative assessment is really the only thing that has a ton of research around it that shows that it's the most beneficial to students. And that's actually something we've tried to promote with our professional development, and it's going to be something that we continue to promote over the years. It's really that feedback that teachers give to students to help show them where they are and where they need to get. That's one of the most powerful pieces of, most powerful tool we have for raising student achievement. Summative assessments that are supposed to evaluate how students learned, it's really meant for a lot of different things, but the formative assessment piece is really the most important.
Trusty Barry.
Dr. Patterson, you just said that the results help the teachers, help the students. What do you tell that teacher when he or she claims that between testing, prepping for the tests, they just keep going on and on, we're kind of handcuffed? We can't do, anyway, actually teach the students? Every once in a while, we'll hear one teacher about that, and, you know, kind of label them troublemaker, we put them in a timeout. There's a good argument from the teachers. We hear from a lot of teachers. What do you tell them?
What we've been trying to do is really minimize the amount of assessments that we're requiring within our district. Really, the only thing that we have been keeping on our plate has really been the NWEA assessment. And like I said, that's something that we use for many different purposes just because it's kind of served that need. One is, we really don't want to do test prep. We don't want to do that focusing on the assessment. We really want to keep the time on NWE as minimal as possible. We don't want the students to feel pressured that they need to spend two days on it because they're worried about their score. We really just want them to take it. And there's really not any research that shows that spending an unlimited amount of time on a test actually improves student achievement at all. So we really don't want that focus to be on those assessments in a way that causes it to veer away from instruction. The other assessments that we use in the classroom should really be very thoughtful in terms of like how often we give them, when we give them, and what they're used for. And really, they're meant to just kind of backwards to design the whole, you know, instructional cycle. So giving the students an idea about this is where you need to be, and this is how we're going to get there. But we really don't want to have that focus on there. And we really do try to, or we really do want to have the feedback from our teachers. So I would like to, you know, get that feedback from them. I mean, I have heard it at times too, and I would like, you know, that to be vocalized if they feel like that's, those are still issues that are happening.
Do you actually reach out to them, survey them, so you can get the feedback from the educators in the classroom?
We have not actually done a district-wide survey on that. We do have committees, like we have an assessment committee at the elementary and high school level, and we do, and that's comprised entirely of teams. And I do know from those groups, there are, you know, lots of conversations about which testing do we require, which we don't. And although we do have a lot of comments about not wanting to overtest and not having that stress about it, we do also have a number of teachers that say this is beneficial and resulted.
So parents have that option, opt out their students, their children, from the tests. And when Trusty Petrikov was asking some questions, I thought of a question. At what point does it start costing the district money? If we, okay, it's not at 95%. 95% affects grading the school, the classroom. Is there a certain point where it starts affecting funding resources?
I honestly do not, I'm not aware. If we did not comply with the law and offer the assessments, that would be one source of it. But I think as long as we're doing that, I'm not aware of the funding consequence that would fall with that.
The reason I'm asking is every once in a while, you get a parent to come in and talk to the principal and say, "I studied in there and sleep last night just thinking about this," whatever. And they get the wink, wink, you can actually opt them out. I don't think enough, you know, not a lot of parents know that they can do that, I guess, until they're educated on that part. But I guess from the discussion, and you're the messenger today, so it's not, nothing personal. So I guess from the discussion, I guess, Dr. Malek, probably going back to your team, this needs to be discussed a little further. What options do we have as a district? Where can we, I mean, if there's, I mean, yes, we can educate our parents and our voters to, you know, advocate to the state and the federal level, but what else can we do, I guess, we need to find out as a district? Because this has been, these kind of questions, obviously, I'm not the expert, Dr. Patterson is. These kind of questions always come up in discussion with parents, teachers. And from what I'm hearing, you know, from a parent here at the table, that this is very, very stressful. What is it that we can do as a district? What is it that we can, you know, what else can we do? I mean, I'm sure we're doing everything we can. What else can we do?
Yeah, we can, well, a couple of things. There's one, we can look at what Dr. Patterson and I, going back to that 2017 memo and trying to reduce the amount of assessments. I think the NWA, I will say, does have value because it's to help the individual student. That's why we brought it in. Now, it does comply with certain laws, like the teacher evaluation and other things. But I totally support what Dr. Patterson says. We do not want test prep or any of that kind of thing going on, and we've put out communications on that, and that time shouldn't be spent on those areas. I'm very passionate about this. If you want to read a 600-page dissertation on assessment and accountability, I have some strong viewpoints. I would say to you that a lot of the things that we are doing are because it's required by the state and the federal government. The funding that used to cost districts was under the old No Child Left Behind 2002 legislation that if you didn't test up to a certain percentage, and then you were in a certain category, you would be forced to provide certain services, thus money you'd have to allocate. Right now, we're not aware of anything other than the state could forfeit Title I dollars that come, which we definitely don't want to do. So the provision would be, if the state didn't comply with the federal government, then you're talking about a large sum of federal dollars that comes to the state of Michigan, and obviously Dearborn students' benefits. So that's where the issue would come in. So, you know, the state also, things are often made for political reasons. It's just the reality of the situation. I support generally the index system that Dr. Patterson had talked about, but then the state went ahead and they implemented an A to F at the same time, you know, and they've changed it multiple times. We've talked about it here again and again, and so you don't have consistency. So there's a lot of decisions that are being made for different reasons, and a lot of times are not being made for the benefit of the students. So what we can do in the district is a couple of things. We can review our current system with Dr. Patterson, and we're very grateful to get him. We recruited him out of California, and he's a great leader in that area. We'll review it. We'll take input of our staff and our students and our parents. The reality is that some of the things that we're required to do by law, and we have to do it. We can advocate for change, and I do that, and I think all of us here could do that. The more discussions that we have with the legislature, and obviously, the state of Michigan controls more. But just recently, Dr. Rice has been very outspoken against the read-by-third grade and the A to F system and all these things that are required in the pandemic. So I would say it's twofold. We can look at what we're doing. We can tighten our system. We can try to reduce the assessments that we provide. But there is a bottom line where a multiple measures approach, and that's what we've done in teacher evaluation, is you want a multiple measures approach. There is a purpose for some assessments that are even standardized because it gives you a different data set, and you want those assessments that are going to help the students. But I definitely agree that we want to ratchet up the formative assessment more on the formative side and those that will help. And if we need to do things within our staff ranking to make sure and to educate parents, Mental Health Month, that, look, we don't want students to feel pressured for these assessments. I had to, you know, I did my PhD at Wayne State, and in order to get into the program, I had to take this Miller's Analogy test. Had no relevance to what I did throughout the entire program. I didn't have, you know, but it was a requirement. And so some of those requirements are out there, and they're not just us. They're out there in society in the United States and beyond. And so we can work to change some of those things. So that would be my approach. It'd be twofold. It'd be one, advocacy on the political side, and the second is to really look at what we're doing under Dr. Patterson's leadership, to review it, to get on top of it, to tighten the things that he said, and to make sure that we're doing things that are benefiting the students and not to the detriment of the students.
So the question was asked...
Thank you for the question.
I'm sorry. Yeah, the question was asked earlier, are some of these tests biased towards the special population or disadvantaged population? And the answer is, we can't get that data from the state or federal government for obvious reasons. It's political. It is political. So I like where this is going. You mentioned it, and I know it was mentioned earlier. We need input from our staff. Let's take that pretty seriously. Because if you ask a teacher, we can't estimate how many days a student is missing instructional time. But if you ask that fourth-grade teacher, she or he probably have a good, they have a good idea how many days are missed because of this. So, yeah, I would love to hear some input from our teachers. Who knows? Might come back that, hey, this is a good thing. But let's go ahead and talk to our staff. I think it would be a good direction for this district to go.
I'd like to wrap up this part of the presentation after our last couple of questions. Trusty Watts, do you have one other item?
Well, and I think, you know, what we realize, there are some things that we're somewhat handcuffed, and we can't control, or maybe there are some things that we can control. So I think from that going forward, making sure that, you know, reevaluate, see what we can control, see who we can contact, you know, from the state level because we need to make sure we're doing right for our students. And I think the other thing, and you had mentioned it, is, you know, if we have to do an assessment, or if we have to do instead of the M-step, is there something else that can take place of the M-step and NWEA? Where it kind of gives us the benefits of both, but also that, you know, it's culturally appropriate for our students so that when they're reading those questions, it's something that applies to them? Because, I mean, I was, growing up, I was horrible at taking tests, in our next test, because we didn't speak that language. And, you know, as I got older, it was a little bit better, but it was a horrible feeling. You know, that it was something that obviously no one else in the school had it other than a few of us. So, you know, I think these are good conversations to have, and I think, you know, going forward, that we have these opportunities that we're seeing. You know, we didn't take the test last year, and the sun came up. So I think it's also one of those, like, we know it's been an issue. So how do we then kind of go forward, making sure that we have best interest in making changes that benefit our students? So that was it. Thank you.
Trusty Moser.
Two things. I think what we're hearing right now is that we're not advocating for teach prep or preparations for the test, but unfortunately, it's happening. We're not sharing, we're not intending to share those scores with the students, but students already know their scores, and they memorize them. But I would say, you know, remembering back and going back, students will learn or will remember vividly their trips, their projects, the things that they did with their friends. And they would rather do these things instead of spending their time on testing. Now, looking at the list of tests, we have a lot. And I think we still need to go back to the drawing board and minimize those tests for our students. Maybe a student doesn't have to take the WEA every year. Maybe take it once every three years. Another thing that I want to mention is that I think we do use these standardized exams in our special programs like STEM and early college, if I'm not mistaken. So we have to revisit those because students who are ESL, who might, who probably are very bright in math and science, but they're still struggling in English, would not get that opportunity to enroll in STEM because of these standardized exams. So we have to review those. I would like to not consider standardized exams for those special programs. Those things are under our control before we reach out to the representatives. The last thing that I would like to mention is that we still need to hear from teachers of how much time is being devoted to tests, and not only the test time, but also the prep, the amount of time that we take for students to take those exams and to review those exams with them as well. So those are my points. Thank you.
One thing that has been brought up a couple of times is students knowing how they did. Maybe it's just due to society, but if you go to any T-ball game, they know the score, though no one kept score. The kids know how they're doing on these things. There's only so much that we can do. And we always will need to do some type of assessment so we know where are the strengths and where are the weaknesses that we still need to make some changes to. The NWEA, if we got rid of that one, we got to find something else to take its place because we're using it for several different parts. So we're going to have to keep this conversation going. We're going to have to keep reaching out to the educators and get their feedback as to how much time is needed on these, and keep doing what's in the best interest of the student, which is to make sure that when they're graduating, they've got the necessary knowledge and skills to be productive members of society. Any other items?
President Thor, may I just, President Thor, may I just add one thing? And this primarily relates to formative tests and not summative tests. But in some cases, we've really beat on tests. But in some cases with students, it shows them, especially, like I said, with formative tests, it shows them that their hard work, they are being successful. It lets them know that, gives them some confidence. So I just want to say a little something positive about testing students because they can get something out of it, again, primarily in formative tests.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. We appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Yes, we're lucky to have you here. Thank you.
Next item, please.
We have another presentation for building a resilient community, Mr. Mike Assale.
President Thor, Superintendent Malek, board trustees. Thank you, guys, for this opportunity. As mentioned earlier, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. So I'm here with some of my great colleagues in the district who are going to talk to you a little bit about mental health and how we here in Dearborn are building that resilient community. Before I get into that, just a quick overview on what mental health is. So, excuse me, I am going to read the slide. But according to the CDC, mental health among children are described as serious changes in the way children typically learn, behave, or handle their emotions, causing distress and problems getting through the day. With that said, just a couple of quick facts regarding mental health. One in six children ages two to eight are diagnosed with a mental health disorder. Less than half of them get treated. So there's going to be a trend here. I want you guys to pay attention. In addition, one in six youth who are experiencing mental health, there's a delayed onset of treatment for at least 11 years. Now, here, we're diagnosed with a mental health disorder, and it takes 11 years before we get treatment. In addition to that, one in 20 adults are diagnosed with a mental health disorder, and less than two-thirds of them get treatment. So as you see, we're kind of seeing that trend of not receiving the treatment that may be there and available for people. And that's kind of partly why we're here too. We're here to talk a little bit about the mental health stigma and start helping our community just get over the mental health stigma as well. In addition, why is positive mental health so important? Well, besides just improving your day-to-day life, children will develop mental and mental milestone. Well, besides just improving your day-to-day life, um, children will meet, develop mental and mental um milestone. Um, they're going to build that resilience by um learning some of these coping strategies, right? Learning how to be resilient, so on and so forth. But there is light at the end of the tunnel. There are mental health treatments out there, so part of the team's goal and my goal today. Is going to be just to educate the community on, you know, what are some avenues they can take if their family members or their students are struggling with mental health. So with that said, I am going to turn it over to our great school psychologist, Dr. Joan De Souza, who's going to talk about adverse childhood experience.
Adverse childhood experiences are. A potentially traumatic event that happened to a child between birth and 17. And for example, what we experiencing right now going through the global pandemic. Can be potential traumatic to a child. Witnessing violence at home or the community. Having a family member who has attempted or completed the act of suicide. Also included are the aspects of a child's environment. Being in a community that's unstable, unsafe, moving constantly. Being raised uh in childhood poverty. Having substance abuse problems or mental illness in the family. And instability to parental separation, incarceration, or homelessness. So those could be potential contributors. Adverse childhood experience. Fortunately, we have protective factors that act as buffers on mitigation. So that children will have better outcomes. For example, I noticed the first presentation was safe driving. And that is very important because children need safety. Great schools offer before and after school programs. That help a child's athletics, uh providing two lunches. Educate food and storage. All these are, provide relief and they build resilient skills and coping skills. To overcome traumatic and adverse. When you turn it. Good evening, everyone.
I'll be talking tonight about the mental health, red, red flags that parents should be aware of and look for in terms of. At home. For example, if a child um has excessive sleeping beyond normal, you know, fatigue or. You know, it could indicate that the student or the child has depression or substance abuse. Or insomnia or any other issue. So usually we tell the parents to look at the whole child. Look, for example, at the social, emotional, behavioral, you know, side of the child. How is he doing physiologically, physically, mentally? You know, talk to your child, discuss things with them. See how's their day, um, what did they do, how they feel, how's the school? So the more parents, you know, progress monitor their kids, discuss things with them, the better interaction is between them and they know. More about their children. So um, another thing I want to mention about, you know, less of appetite, loss of self-esteem. Uh, aggressive behavior, conflict between siblings, anything out of the ordinary in terms of our siblings dealing with each other. That might be indication of, you know, there's mental illness or something that the student is going through. So it, the parents should discuss this definitely with a professional, mental health professional or with a teacher. Sorry, yeah. Um, so the impact on family, when we have a student or a child is not diagnosed. Or not treated for mental, you know, health by professional. So what will happen? Honestly, these symptoms can cause uh poor functioning, you know. Uh, in terms of developmental time, whether at school, whether at home, in community, in society. Uh, and children almost, you know, they fail being, when they are in school. To be successful academically, socially, emotionally, to be what their peers. Also, children with mental illness, they are robbed from their, uh, you know, childhood. Um, and parents, this is impact also parents, when parents, for example, the school called them to go and pick up their kids. So the impact is on both, on children and on the, on the parents as well. Um, so when we have mental health condition in children with chronic illness. Um, this will be two times more likely to have psychosocial dysfunction, as I said, in the school, home, and community and society. Um, and there definitely children and their parents, they will access two times. Um, mental, you know, mental health and healthcare services in general. Um, so another factor, very, very important factor, is the issue about stigma, blame, and shame. Um, so we want to educate our parents and our community that it's okay if any child has any issue. Or mental health issue, to talk about it, to bring awareness, discuss it in confidential way, you know, with your doctor. With your school social worker, school psychologist, teacher. And come up with solution and resources because help is available no matter what. Um, and of course, the diagnosis impact the whole family. Uh, now I want to turn it to my colleague, Ms. Alawi, who's going to be talking about strategies for parents and help and resources available for parents.
Good evening. Um, as parents, we play an important role in our child's mental health and well-being. We can build um good mental health by the things we say, the things we do, and the type of environment that we create at home. Um, we build strong and caring relationships by spending time together and um creating family routines. This gives your child something to look forward to and create memorable moments and it could be something as simple as. Having family dinners twice a week or maybe movie night or game night. Um, and also teach your child how to relax when they feel upset and show your child how to solve problems. It's important for our child to understand how to relax, but also it's important them, for them to understand that it is okay to feel angry and it is okay to feel upset. That's a normal feeling, but when you're feeling upset and you're feeling angry, it's important to calm down, maybe take a deep breath. Um, go for a walk, listen to music, whatever would help them calm down so they could um. Solve their problems in a more rational way. And when we're building these strong and caring relationships, we're also creating a sense of belonging at home. Our child not only is viewing us as a parent, but also as a friend, someone that they could come to. And they know that they're going to listen to them when they do have a problem. And when your child does come to you. Please listen with empathy and when we're listening with empathy, we are going to make sure we are looking at our child. We're nodding our head when it's appropriate and we are not going to judge them, although to, to us, their situation might be something minor. But to them, it's major. It's something that they're coming to you and it's important to them. Um, and then also very importantly, consider their time period. Our children, as you all know, are living in a time period where it's heavily impacted by social media. And they're, they're trying to keep up with every day of what they're seeing on social media and what their friends have, so please take that into consideration. And also um, help your child develop self-esteem. When our children have um high self-esteem, they feel good, they're more confident. And make sure you're asking them questions when you're doing this about their interests and about their everyday lives. Praise them not only for their major gains, but also their, their minor ones and just the minor things they do around the house as well. And without saying, I know as parents, we're all doing this naturally, we're showing our, we're, we're showing our students lots of love and acceptance, acceptance. But most importantly, take care of you um before you can take care of anyone else. Make sure you're taking care of yourself by doing your own um self-care routines. Um, and so where do we go for help? If you do feel that your child, if you do have some concerns for your child's mental health, um, first and foremost. Um, please go to your medical professional, your family doctor. They know you and your child the best. And they'll be able to guide you and um, and they work with um other outside agencies that can help. And um, at Dearborn Public Schools, we have our social emotional hotline with a team of social workers and counselors that are there to answer. Um, your questions. If you don't, if you do not feel comfortable calling that hotline. Uh, all of our schools have um social workers and counselors um that can also assist you. And we've also um, we have a list here of mental health agencies that we've become, become familiar with. While working with our families through one of my favorite, our wraparound service. Um, and what wraparound services is basically um, we at Dearborn Public Schools. Um, have meetings with the parents and also the outside agencies that the parents are working with, obviously with the consent of the parents. We collaborate um to um ensure that the child's academic and behavioral needs are met. Thank you.
Okay, well, we appreciate it. Before, before we end off though, you know, what are we doing here in Dearborn Public Schools? What are some of the things that we're doing that fall under that mental health or social emotional umbrella? Obviously, we have the Dearborn initiatives going on, social emotional learning, trauma-informed instruction, right? I know last month we mentioned that we trained about 80 staff members who are going to be certified presenters in trauma. And hopefully, early on next year, we're going to be a trauma-informed district. Um, in addition, presentations like this, right? Just building that awareness. Uh, communication with the community, with our staff, with our parents, that's going to go a long way as well. Um, and then finally, I could say that, you know, since I've been in this role in special education for the last four years. We've consistently increased our mental health professionals. I'll tell you, when I first came in, we had roughly about 29 social workers or so. I'm proud to say that, you know, we're at over 40 social workers now in the district and we do look at increasing our social work number again next year. So all of this hopefully ties in together to build the resilient community. And just to end it off, we do have some student testimonials over at um Howe Elementary School. Where under the leadership of Principal Fornier and Dr. Joan De Souza. Um, some of the students gave some testimonials of just some social emotional learning they've been going through. So I think we'd like to show that uh video shortly right now.
My name is Yassine Mohammed. I am from, I'm in fourth grade. I am from Howe School Elementary. And in this, during this very difficult year in the pandemic of COVID-19. It's been really hard and I've been really scared to get back to school. But thanks to Dr. De Souza's help in S E L classes, she calmed me down with her meditation and all her, and all her stuff. And she always kept saying, don't worry, and she gave me more faith to come back to school.
Hi, my name is Madison Lemon. I am a fifth grader too. I didn't want to go back to school because I didn't like wearing my mask. I learned to overcome my fears in the group from Ms. Bedaz and Dr. Jupol, who shared their experiences.
My name is Hassan Mahenna and I'm from fourth grade. And in the S E L, Dr. De Souza and the schoolmaster taught us how to meditate and how to keep calm during the pandemic. And it really worked. We are happy being in school.
Hi, my name is Katori and I enjoyed being in groups with Ms. Schoolmaster. And I learned how to be calm and I am happy to be back in school.
Hi, my name is Jack Saban. I'm a fourth grader two. Ms. Schoolmaster makes a good and Dr. De Souza um helps me cope with anxiety. When I'm having, when I'm having trouble with it and going back to school.
As you see, there's wonderful things going on, but this is also could go for a special tribute to our great colleague, Dr. De Souza, who after 22 years is retiring this year. And that's going to be a great loss to our district. Very bittersweet though. Uh, with that said, we'll open it up for questions.
Is everyone waiting for the?
Lucky.
Yeah, there we go.
Is everyone waiting for the other one to ask the first one?
I'll go first. It's okay.
Okay, Trustee Watts.
Well, I am wearing my, um, my one friend, um, she is a, um, a family psychologist. And um, she, I have her running anxiety shirt. Um, so thank you for bringing, putting this together because I think it's been a very difficult year for many of our students, our parents. Our staff. I don't think any, I don't think COVID has been, um, has let anyone not feel its effect. So um, thank you for putting this together. Um, I know many of the strategies that you have mentioned there with the mindfulness and the yoga. And just the, the breathing. I do myself here sometimes, so thank you for that. But I think it's important that we, you know, continue having this conversation because. Going forward, we're not going to, it's not going to all of a sudden dissipate and our students are going to continue to have these feelings. And I think being able to validate those feelings, but also giving them the words to express that. I remember I had a student that told me he felt really, and I think he was four, but he couldn't tell me. He described his anger as feeling red on the inside, but he didn't know the words for that. And so I think being able to bring those words to the feelings beyond the sad and the mad, but the frustrating. And I remember my daughter told me, she was overwhelmed. Mom, I'm overwhelmed. I have too much going on. And so then to be able to say, okay, what are you feeling overwhelmed about? So thank you for putting this together because again, I think it starts these conversations with our, with our own students and our own children saying. What is making you overwhelmed? And going from there. And we always have, she always tells me her, her problems right before bedtime. It's like a 10-minute therapy session. I call it every night. But thank you for, again, for bringing this forward and I look forward to um other things that you're going to do in the district. Thank you.
Great points. Thank you.
Trustee Petlicoff.
Yeah, I, I just saw a news report, um, and they were talking about um. When we try to get everybody back to a normal school year and um, the, the biggest effect is going to be separation anxiety with these kids. Who have spent over a year being at home, kind of cocooned with their family. Um, and now having to go back out into the world and we saw some of the students who were coming in stressed at the beginning of our hybrid. Um, classes, but come fall, we're, we're anticipating having everybody basically back in the classroom. And I'm assuming that usually it's the kindergarten first week jitters that you have, that separation anxiety. That we're now going to be confronted with a larger um student population. Going to have to readjust and get back into the norm again. Do we, what can we do to help you? I mean, I'm going to assume you're going to need in every building some additional support. To um help staff and students readjust to the new normal.
Absolutely, uh, Trustee Petlicoff. Actually, you bring up great points and those are conversations we're having. On a day-to-day basis within our staff and our S E L teams, um, under the leadership of Dr. Bazie Gates, when she meets with the social workers. You know, S E L is going to be the huge component moving forward and just having all of our students reintegrate again. You know, that's why the addition of mental health staff and support is going to help our buildings greatly. Also, the trauma-informed instruction, that's going to help all of our teachers just to be able to identify some of those things and hopefully have some strategies. Just to kind of um, you know, meet the students' needs of wherever they're at. But we are anticipating there may be some anxieties of coming back and just reintegrating into things all over.
Are we going to maybe potentially consider at, at, at each building a um reintroduction uh picnic? Or something like that where we can. Lead everybody in, in a more, you know, like the end of the school year, you always have something going on to say goodbye to the students. Now we need something to really engage the entire building. Again, coming in after this long um. Period of time where they haven't, haven't had a normal school year.
Absolutely. I think we could work with, with principals on a lot of kickoffs and those were kind of the initiatives we were talking about. Typically, with our PBIS buildings, they always have a PBIS kickoff, right?
Right.
So those may just have to happen a little bit earlier in the school year than possibly just after the first few weeks of school. Just to get everyone comfortable and reintegrated. And our principals really do a nice job and are very attuned into the S E L of their building, so I know they're going to be planning things. Um, as well, moving forward for some of the reintegration of kids.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Assale, before you take off, we uh as a board, at the beginning of this year, wanted to focus on a couple of things. And one of them was social emotional. So we do appreciate you very much for taking the time to be here today. A lot of this presentation was more focused on the students, so how are we supporting our staff also?
Absolutely. Those are, those are actually great questions and I know um Ms. Holloway, actually, within her slide, she's like, take care of you. And those are messages we're always sending staff. I know um, you know, partnering up with, you know, different district initiatives like U Lyons. And just making those more available to some of our staff members as well. And also, you know, just the small things I think for staff are so important. Just making sure that they know that they're appreciated on a day-to-day basis and have somebody to come talk to. Because we are going to have some, some difficult, challenging days, but I could tell you that. You know, with my experiences in any meeting that we always run, we're always talking about the importance of self-care. Um, and continuing that self-care and making sure um that staff always puts themselves and their families first. Because if. Because if the staff member isn't feeling well, then they're less effective, obviously, with everything else that they have to do.
Great. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.